Since it is four o'clock, I call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order February 12th, 2025. Please say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Thank you very much. I'd like to read the ground rules now. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Here are the ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence the ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give it to the planning staff before the start of the meeting. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Your microphone will otherwise remain muted. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the board of supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. Dockets other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for an applicant statement, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and this can be adjusted by the chair, five minutes for applicant rebuttal. Thank you. I'd like to do roll call. Mr. Limbach? Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
District One Chair Depew is present. Mr. Young?
Present.
Mr. Watkins and Mr. Gonzalez are absent. Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Mr. Martzki?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. This is a time for call to public pursuant to ARS Section 38-431. Dot zero one. We'll do the minutes after this. Is there anyone at call to public? Hearing done. We shall approve the previous month's minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or comments before we vote? Mr. Martzki? Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fickett. Take a vote. Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Staying.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Young?
I'm staying as I was not present.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins is not here. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes are barely approved. This is the time for public hearings. Our first item. SU 24-23 Desert Rose Christian Cemetery. This is a special use application for a cemetery. The applicant is Clyde Martin. Are you present, Mr. Martin? Or his representative? Are you, Mr. Martin? No? All right, we'll get your name in a few minutes. Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 2423, a special use authorization request for a cemetery. The applicant is Desert Rose Christian Fellowship, care of Clyde Martin, and Mr. Daniel Troyer is with us today to represent Mr. Martin. Property is located at 4684 South Mosen Road. That would be tax parcel 10763007B. Property is owned RU4, plan designations are rural. There is an existing church on the property, and the proposal is to supplement the church with the subordinate use of a cemetery. Property is located approximately two miles southeast of the Sierra Vista municipal boundary. This portion of Mosen Road, which is southeast of Sierra Vista, is largely characterized by low-density residential development on parcels of four acres. The applicant has provided a site plan showing the existing church and improvements to the site. The proposed cemetery totals 5,000 square feet. Seventy burial plots are proposed. This is a drawn image of the subject property. This would be viewing west. This image is viewing east towards Mosen Road. And this image is viewing to the north. And one more shot of the property, the red indicating the approximate location of the proposed cemetery. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. There are nine factors applied to this application. Staff has identified the following factors of approval. The request complies with applicable factors. The cemetery is a subordinate use that creates minimal off-site impacts, and staff has received support from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor. Staff has also received opposition from nearby property owners. The applicant mailed letters to property owners within 500 feet back in November, and staff executed the public notification process during the month of January. Staff mailed 13 notices to property owners within 500 feet, receiving two responses in favor and two responses in opposition. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2423, a special use request for a cemetery. We are available for the commission's questions.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant statement. Mr. Troyer? We'd like to hear from you about your project. Come forward. State your name and address and how you represent the church, please.
My name is Daniel Troyer. I live at 8687 East Chandler Lane in Hereford. My phone number is 520-255-8721. Yeah, so our churches are requesting a special use permit for, to be able to use for our members to bury if our members would die. I think, you know, it's been pretty well explained by Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a time to hear from the public. Is there any other persons? I think I do have one request here. Deborah Chatham, are you present?
I'm present. Yes, I'm here, but I was not wanting to speak. I don't know why that came up. I had filled out a form saying I did not request. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead.
Oh, I had filled out a form saying I did not wish to speak, but I had to hope that somebody would ask about what would happen if the, as the bodies degraded and the materials used to bury them degraded. Would that affect the groundwater? That, I just meant for somebody on the planning commission to ask the applicant that. I didn't really mean to speak myself.
Understood. Thank you for that question. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Hearing done. This is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. Mr. Troyer, do you know the answer to that question by any chance?
I would say that it would not affect the groundwater at all.
Thank you. We'll go with that for now. Thanks. Public hearing is closed. This is a time for commission discussion. Questions for the applicant or staff?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
Mr. Troyer? Do you mind coming up again? So I have read many articles in the last few days, real estate articles, on how cemeteries affect property values. And there is legitimacy to declining values with no shrubbery or natural landscape buffer. However, there are property value increases with the existence of that. Would your church be willing to agree to that as a condition for your cemetery?
I'm sure we would, yes.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the question for staff, please. You have the picture of the nos and the yeses of the neighbors. Oh, yeah, that's it. Just to clarify, on the property, where is the proposed cemetery in relation to the lower red X? Is it that corner? Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery. The property to the southeast of the subject site with the red X, that would be geographically the closest property line to the proposed location? That's correct.
That is my question.
Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? This is the time for the planning director's summary and recommendation. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2423 to allow a cemetery with the following conditions. Cemetery must comply with Section 2.51180 of the zoning regulations, including recording a cemetery survey as a perpetual leaseman and filing a cemetery preservation plan with the county. New parking areas or driveways for the cemetery should use the same surface material used in existing parking areas. The cemetery shall not conflict with grading and drainage plans approved by the county for the church building or other applicable requirements of the floodplain regulations. As requested by the commission, condition number four, the cemetery shall be visually screened from adjacent properties by a landscape buffer comprised of native trees and shrubs. Standard conditions relating to permitting and modifications of an approved special use will apply and have not been altered. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So the conditions have been amended with item four?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we need to mention that in our motion, or?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So now I call for the question. I will make the motion. I move to approve docket SU 24-23 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff and the amendment approved by this commission. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martzki. Is there any discussion? We just added a condition. We're all good with that? Call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This passes. And any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, or online at cochise.az.gov. Congratulations and thank you. Second item. SU 24-24 Apache Way Accessory Living Quarter. This is a special use application for an ALQ. Applicant Clyde, I'm sorry, Ron Fletcher? Are you present, Mr. Fletcher? Thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket, whoops. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 2424, a special use authorization request for 1,568 square foot accessory living quarter. Again, the applicant is Ron Fletcher. The property is located at 77 West Apache Way in Cochise. Tax parcel 20622059. Property is owned RU4. Plan designations are rural. The current use of the property is for a single-family dwelling. The proposed use is to have two single-family dwellings, a primary and an accessory dwelling unit. Property is located north of Sunsites, approximately one and a half miles west of Highway 191. The area is characterized by low-density residential use on parcels of four or more acres with RU2 and RU4s. The commission has seen quite a few of these in the last year, three or four perhaps. And typically, it's asking for relief from the development standards, which, and I think in every case, it's been the request is for a larger accessory dwelling unit than is permitted by the zoning regulations. So Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies the provisions where we can administratively approve an accessory dwelling. These dwellings are allowed by right rural and most residential districts. They do have to be on the same parcel. The owner needs to reside on the property. They can be attached or detached. In this case, we're talking about a detached accessory dwelling unit, which would be a manufactured home. And then the definitions of what a dwelling unit is. And again, the ALQ application is an administrative review and approval by staff. Special uses are required for ALQs when they are rented or leased separately from the principal residence. If there's a business that's not permissible by the home occupation provisions, or if there is a deviation from the development standards, which is the case with all previous ALQ requests, as well as this one. Again, in this particular case, the maximum size is 1,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting approval of a 1,568 square foot ALQ. The applicant has provided a site plan. The property was located in Richland Ranchettes, which was planted in 1962. There is an existing single-family residence with some accessory structures. The ALQ is proposed to be placed at the northwest corner of the property. There is an RV on the property that was placed by a previous owner. That's the only other structure. This is an image of the property viewing to the north. To the northwest, showing the surrounding intermittent single-family residential development. And to the west, and again, the red highlight shows the approximate location of the ALQ. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. In this case, seven factors apply. Staff has identified the following factors in favor of approval. All applicable factors comply. Accessory dwellings are allowed by right in all rural zoning districts. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. The applicant did mail letters in January. Staff executed the public notification process in the month of January. Staff mailed 15 notices to property owners within 500 feet, receiving four responses in favor. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2424, a special use request for a 1,568 square foot accessory living quarter. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Fletcher, this is time for your statement. Please say your name and address and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ronald Fletcher. 77 West Apache Way, Cochise, Arizona. We're asking for the accessory living quarter for my mom and dad so we can get them out here where we can take care of them and where they can live comfortably. That's about all I have.
We may have some questions for you. Thank you very much for that. Public hearing is now open. This is the time for comments from other persons, either for or against. Do we have anyone in the room? Or online? Hearing done? The public portion is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for applicant or staff?
I had, I think, one question, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
I see from that particular site plan, you have the proposed, it's a smaller double-wide, right? In the corner up there?
Yes, sir.
Have you already purchased it? Or were you shopping for that particular dimension?
Yeah, so they shopped and found one. They haven't purchased it yet, and we're waiting, you know, you know, how this, the outcome of this meeting, what happens here, so.
Okay, well, it looks well arranged, and that was really my only question.
Thank you.
Please stay here, Mr. Fletcher. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
Were you proposing, do you perceive proposing additional structures later on?
Yes, in the, somewhere in the near future, I'd like to do a shop. You know, somewhere, well, basically where that barn is now, I'd like to turn that into a shop. You know, maybe just a touch bigger.
Okay, thank you.
And I have two questions. Is the RV occupied at this time?
When they come out here to visit, they stay for a week or two at a time, and that's.
So just a temporary situation?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second question is, why did you choose so far away? It's almost like the ALQ is going to belong to the neighbors.
Just so they could feel like it's theirs, you know, where we're kind of separated a little bit.
Just give your, so nothing specific, just separation?
Yeah, yeah, and the view back there is pretty good.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Anything else? Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2424 to allow a 1,580 square foot accessory living quarter. And the following conditions are the standard conditions relative to permit timelines and any modifications of an approved special use. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd like to call for this motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 24-24 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factor is in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
A second? Mr. Saunders? Is there any discussion of this motion? Call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations, it passes. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office or online at cochise.az.gov. Thank you. I think we're on item three. RZ 24-26 on Denim Road and special use 24-25 Pedro de Castro. Are you present, sir? Stand by, we'll ask you to come up. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a staff presentation for dockets RZ 2426 and SU 2425. Applicant initiated request to rezone property from R36 to RU4 with a concurrent special use authorization for an impound yard. The applicant is Pedro de Castro. Property is located on Denim Road near Douglas. The tax parcel is 40783006. Property is owned R36. The proposed zoning is RU4. Comp plan designations are both rural. The property is undeveloped. There have been permits issued for septic and a well. Proposed use is residential with an impound yard if approved, if the special use is approved. Again, the property is located approximately one and a half miles west of Douglas. Property totals 40 acres and is surrounded by other properties with zone R36. The nearest residences are immediately to the east. The property is located approximately one-quarter mile west of Highway 191. Again, there are residences to the east and a couple to the southwest along the front edge of 191. And Cochise Industrial Park is approximately one-quarter mile south. The applicant has provided a concept plan proposing to split the 40-acre parcel into 10, excuse me, four 10-acre parcels. Three of the properties are likely to be developed with single-family residences, with one being used for the impound yard. The applicant is proposing this arrangement for the commission's consideration with residential uses along the east and west property lines in an attempt to buffer if the impound yard is approved in the future. So this is an image of Denim Road viewing to the west. And this is viewing east. It's important to note that Mr. De Castro is, has improved Denim Road. Denim Road, it's in much better condition than it used to be, and it seems to be getting, a lot of the surrounding property owners are using this now for access to 191. This is the subject property viewing to the northeast. And this would be viewing southwest Denim Road in the foreground. And another image, this would also be viewing southeast. And this is Cochise Industrial Park to the south. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. In this case, 10 factors apply to this downzone. Again, this is a downzone from R36 to RU4. Staff has identified the following factors in favor of approval. Complies with all 10 applicable factors. The downzone reduces the allowed residential density. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. The only factor not in favor that staff's really seen as far as the downzoning itself is a significant portion of the property is located within a flood zone. This could potentially constrain development of the site. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. In this case, 10 factors apply, or excuse me, eight factors apply. This application complies with all applicable factors with conditions. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Factors not in favor. Non-residential uses are typically most appropriate along collectors, arterials, or highways, major roadways with it or improved surfaces. In this case, site access is limited to an unimproved local road. Unimproved with respect to the fact that Mr. De Castro has been maintaining the road. The applicant mailed out letters in 27 February of 2024. Staff executed the notification process in the month of January 2025. Staff mailed 12 notices to property owners within 900 feet, not receiving any responses in favor or opposition. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of dockets RZ 2426 and SU 2425. Request to rezone property from R36 to RU4 with a concurrent special use authorization for an impound yard. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. and Ms. De Castro, it's your turn. Please state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes, I believe. Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Moreno. He is Pedro de Castro. We're here requesting or requesting approval for rezoning of our 40-acre property with the special use for an impound yard. We would like to split it in four. The first portion of it would be our home, which is basically where we want to live on forever. And the impound yard, since we currently have a toll company, we currently have our office at 2046 A Avenue. That's substantially further away from where we want to be. Plus, the rental fees are really expensive. So we would like to request so that it's closer to us as a family. And since it is a family-owned business, we would like to keep it closer to us for my peace of mind. It's easier for me to see whenever he gets home. He does have calls at night. And him being at a different place, I'm not sure, is he okay, is he not? This way, we're, you know, a little bit more careful as to what he, what's going on with him. as to what he, what's going on with him. We also, in the future, it's not in the near future. The other two properties would be given to our children and they can build there with us. The, the surrounding areas, we've had neighbors. We spoke to Ms. Sharon Denham, which is a young lady right behind where we would be. She had no issues. She, the only thing she had about is maintaining the road, which we are currently already doing. It's better, it's not something that we did because she requested. It was more for ourselves as well. We don't want our vehicles damaged in any way. Having the business there would also, we would maintain it cleaned up, covered up. We don't want all these vehicles out there. With that said, we also would have our vehicles, anything that comes from our tow, our impound, would be gone within the six months. We don't foresee anything further than that. We do, we currently do this as well. We send our vehicles up to Tucson to get crushed just so that we don't have all these subsequent vehicles in our lots. We try to, as soon as we get our paperwork from MBD, we usually get them out within the three months. They are, there was a request, a recommendation on there from a 10 to 6. It's a 24 hour business. So I would ask that that be taken off as a recommendation. Our business is 24 hours. We don't foresee any interference with any, anyone around us. Any noise? We do have like the, the area where we have the trailers that you had an aerial picture of? That there. That there, that's, that's about a mile, mile away from us. And our noise factor would be very little to no noise factor. It would be just the startup of the tow truck. And it's less than a mile away from the highway. So noise factor is not, little to minimum. And I think that would be what I, what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time for the public hearing. Do we have any comments from other persons either in the room? Seeing none, online? Hearing none? The applicant has a rebuttal of five minutes. There's nothing to rebut. Will you waive that?
Yes.
The public hearing is then closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for staff or applicant? Mr. Montgomery?
Well, if you're going to push my arm.
We can feel.
Yes, item number three that was mentioned about business hours. And that is in the recommendation list of items. But you're telling us it's a 24 hour, seven days.
Yes.
So I would like to note that difference and agree with it. Okay?
Thank you.
Chairman?
Duly noted.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Mr. Saunders?
After six months, it's not going to be a story.
No, sir. It's just an impound. And basically, whenever it gets towed in, a lot of the time, the driver, the owner of the vehicle usually goes and picks them up. If for whatever reason, they can't take them out, we have that, like I stated, we have that six month period where they can take them out. If not, we go ahead and just get the title for them and we send them out to get crushed or sold, whatever they have to do. No, we do not keep them. We do not want to keep them. Yes.
How much area would the cars, autos typically take up then while they're waiting?
While, while they're waiting, I would say quarter of a block, a city block. Like I said, it just depends on how many vehicles we have.
So not 10 acres worth?
No, ma'am. No. We just put that on there just so that we can actually divide where our residence will be, plus the impound, plus the other two residences at a later time.
Okay. And I didn't, I forget, Mr. Taylor, is there screening required?
Yes.
Yes, you're doing screening?
Yes, I'm sure.
What kind?
At this moment, we're not sure. I know we can either do foliage, shrubs, but I know the front portion of it will have a wall.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
As much of your land is in a flood zone, what, if anything, will you do to mitigate or?
We were, I had that in here. That was on there. We would go ahead and do the floodplain use permit and the traffic impact statements as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
To stop. We're not, we're not involved with the four way split here, right? Of the land? This isn't part of anything we're doing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Saunders, yeah, the minor land division application, if it occurs in the future, would be strictly administrative.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young?
Yes, this is for the applicant. How many vehicles at a, at a time do they foresee having on the property?
Foreseeable, it's anywhere between 15 to 40, I would say. But our business has actually diminished a lot from where we first started. We now have four towing companies in Douglas. So that's diminished a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Young?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 2426 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. And if the commission can go ahead and make a recommendation on the rezoning application.
We want to move on these separately.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Let me, let me get my brain together. This is a special use. Where are we putting the screening in the special use?
All conditions will be associated with the special use.
Can I get a motion on the special use?
The rezoning, please.
I'm sorry. The rezoning first.
Sure. Can we put it up?
That's it. Mr. Montgomery, if you'd add the deletion? Or that's on the special use? I'm sorry, I got so confused. Mr. Montgomery has, has presented.
Okay. Based on, based on factors in favor of approval, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ 24-26 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Marzky. We're voting on RZ 24-26, Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Young? Mr. Young, on the rezoning? Thank you. Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The rezoning carries. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2425 to allow an impound storage yard with the following conditions. The impound storage yard will not exceed 10 acres and stored vehicles shall be a minimum of 20 feet within all property lines. A floodplain use permit and traffic impact statement are required at permitting. We're striking condition number three. A landscaped six foot solid wall is required along the impound yard's street frontage. Impounded vehicles shall be screened from view along remaining property lines with site obscuring wall or fence landscaping and/or natural terrain. On-site parking and storage areas and driveways shall be improved with two inch gravel to reduce dust. The remaining conditions, Madam Chair, we've changed the permitting requirement from 12 months to 24 months. The remaining requirements for any applicable state or federal permitting or any other county permits, or if the, if it approves change of, excuse me, and if approved special use undergoes any modifications, that would be done by staff or returned to the commission. So conditions seven and eight have not been changed. So we've stricken number three and we've modified condition number six, standard condition number six, from 12 months to 24 months. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Marzky?
I move that we approve docket SU 24-25 allowing for an impound yard. Factors in favor of approval constitute claims of fact.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Special use passes. Thank you very much. Both items are passed. This side, these items will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Anyone not agreeing with the action should contact the Development Services for information. Thank you very much. Our final docket item is SU 2426, recreational event camping, Saguaro Man. The applicant is Arizona Artistic LLC. Will speakers forgive me if I address you by Lisa and Ruby? You may announce your last names in a moment when you come to the microphone. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 2426, a special use authorization request for recreational event camping. The applicant is Arizona Artistic. Property is located on Covered Wagon Road near Wilcox. Tax parcels 305-58050 and 051. These parcels total 80 acres. Properties are zoned RU10. The comprehensive plan designations for both is rural. Current use of the property are intermittent special events. Proposed use are recreational camping events up to eight per year. Property is located approximately 10 miles southeast of the city of Wilcox municipal boundary. Properties are, in the area, range from four up to 40 acres with RU4 and RU10 zoning. The subject properties are bound by privately owned properties to the north, south, and east. Properties to the east are developed with single family residences. The property to the west is in state trust. The applicants have provided a site plan showing the, this is pretty much the same that we've seen with previous special event applications in terms of a single access point with a spillover emergency access for events, internal circulation, designated camping areas, as well as a designated burn area for the recreational burning. There's a helicopter area as well for emergencies if there were an emergency. There are no permanent structures on the site. There are five small accessory structures used for storage. I'm going to talk a little bit about the project itself. The county has issued special event permits in the past, including this year. We issued a special event permit for an April event last week. I believe that's the third or fourth special event permit we've issued for what's known as Saguaro Man in April. Special events are permitted in all zoning districts. The zoning regulations do cap special events at one per quarter. The maximum number of days for the event are seven with four days to set up and dismantle. So in other words, each special event under the special event provisions of the zoning regulations must be set up, conducted, and concluded within an 11 day period. Special event applications are submitted to our development review team, but we do not notify those if those are an administrative application, much like we talked earlier about the accessory living order. The applicants are requesting a special use authorization to allow up to eight events per year. That would equate to 28 total event days with 28 setup and dismantling days. Proposed of the eight events, one would be the large event in the spring, known as Saguaro Man. The other seven would be smaller events. We've issued special event permits in the past for the smaller events in the fall, known as a decompression event. The large events, just speaking generally, can range from 1,000 to 1,200 to 1,300 or 1,400 folks for that large event. The smaller events typically are a couple hundred. So that's what the applicant is proposing for the remainder as far as the smaller events. This is an image of Covered Wagon viewing to the north and viewing to the south. And this is right in front of the subject property. This is drone image showing south with Covered Wagon to the left. You can make out some of the internal circulation sites as well as center on the, on the right hand side, you can see the designated burn area. This image too is viewing to the south. This shows one of the portable storage. And there, like I said, there are five portable storages. None of them are half footings or secured. They're all basically temporary structures. This is viewing southeast. This shows some of the nearest single family residences. Those are to the east across Covered Wagon. This is an image too. I believe this is the northwest. Again, showing some of the storage structures on the property. Viewing north, that's Covered Wagon Road in the background. Another image viewing north with the closest residences to the east. And this is viewing south. That's Indian Trail in the foreground, which is south of the subject property. Covered Wagon to the left. We'll talk about the conditions later, but one of the requirements that has been requested by engineering and natural resources is that Covered Wagon be widened. These are a couple of images from April of 2024. This was just prior to the April Saguaro Man event in 2024. Aside from how much greener it was that, back then, and how much bluer the skies were then, the layout's pretty indicative of what we would see in those days leading up to the event. So we would start to see some temporary structures. Portable toilets with hand washing stations would start to appear. And some of the materials contained in those storage structures would start to be set up. And this one focuses mostly on the burn area. So significantly, I don't recall. I know the applicant can give us some dimensions on that. But the burn area is actually located away from the residences to the east and closer to state land. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. In this case, seven factors apply to this application. Factors in favor of approval include that the request complies with applicable factors with conditions. Another factor in favor of approval is special events with open burns that are previous events. There have been three major and two minor, have not resulted in any reported property damage. Factors not in favor. Staff has received significant opposition from nearby property owners. Additionally, previous events have been disruptive to area residents. We have received complaints relative to traffic, noise, lighting, and concerns about open burning. The applicant mailed letters in December as required by the zoning regulation citizen review process. Staff executed the notification process during the month of January. Staff mailed 32 notices to property owners within one half mile. We received multiple responses in opposition with none in favor. The responses in opposition were six within the notification area and 13 outside the notification area. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2426, a special use request for recreational event camping. We are available for your questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. If you'd like to come forward, please state names and addresses. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you.
My name's Lisa Scheinkoff. I live at 516 West Encantle Boulevard in Phoenix.
My name's Ruby Bujosurio. I live at 2833 West Jasper Drive in Chandler, Arizona.
And thank you for giving us this opportunity to share a bit about our application. Slide? Thank you. As Mr. Taylor had noted, we're mainly known for what we've done so far, which has been our big event, Saguaro Man. But our organization is about a lot more than that. And we'd love to be able to use our land for more than that, which is nothing like Saguaro Man. The purpose of our organization, taken straight from our nonprofit's bylaws, says, "We strive to bring experiences to people in grand awe-inspiring and joyful ways that lift the human spirit and inspire a sense of culture, community, and civic engagement." And we hope that through the rest of our presentation, that you'll see that we're about more than this one event that everybody talks about, which is Saguaro Man. Next slide, please. Three, we have 10 core principles, and three of them are really what led us to this land and to this special permit application. The first of those that I want to talk about is civic responsibility. We know how important it is to conduct events in accordance with local, state, federal laws. More so, we know that we're neighbors and we're part of a larger community. And it's important to us to pay attention to that and be part of that. So we've listened to the responses, and we're paying heed. Second of those is our principle of leave no trace. We respect the environment. We're committed to leaving no physical trace of our activities wherever we gather. We clean up after ourselves. And we endeavor whenever possible to leave such places in a better state than where we found them. And we want to also point out and make sure that this includes having zero impact on the groundwater. We know how important that is, and we don't want to, we will not have any impact on that. And the third is communal effort. We really value cooperation and collaboration, and we hope that this can be a moving point toward that direction with our neighbors and the community of Wilcox, and so on. And we hope that as we proceed, you'll see these principles in action. Next slide, please. Just sharing a timeline. We've been doing camping events like this for more than 20 years throughout the state, starting more in northern Arizona. And we've done several, as Matthew Taylor has mentioned, down here in Cochise for the last several years. And we've been doing that, we think successfully. No major incidents. But yeah, that's, we can read slides and we can move forward. Next slide, please. As you saw in what Mr. Taylor shared, the site itself is 80 acres, about 30 minutes southeast of Wilcox Center. The oval egg is, we think about it more, especially as we think about being able to use the land more. It's not just a burn area. We use that for the recreational burn during Saguaro Man. But that's the only event we do anything like that. That space is really for flexible community workspace and gathering space. As you'll see, and as Mr. Taylor discussed, we're really asking for the ability to be on the land more frequently with much shorter bursts of time and far fewer people. Next slide, please. So why a special use permit? We're seeking, simply put, we're seeking the ability to camp on the land a few more times a year in addition to the two current events. We're looking at very small-scale campouts. We're not talking about parties. No amplified music. No burning of anything, other than maybe a campfire. And just camping, learning together, and working together. The kinds of things we're thinking about are weekends where teams that we already have set up and are ready to go can actually work on the land and develop the plant structure and bring more natural trees and bushes in. Doing the things to make it truly sustainable and beautiful. Leadership development retreats, safety trainings, arts and crafts workshops for the folks who would come there from us, and also for the community. Next slide. Our current events, you've already heard about. We have the one event, the thing we're most famous for, called Saguaro Man. We also have the second event that we've done there now a couple of times, that we call decompression, which is really a campout. Not big music, no fire. About 100 people, 150 people camping together. None of our events, no matter what they are, we don't have vendors, we don't sell food or alcohol, and we pay attention and comply with environmental and safety regulations. Again, we're not looking to host any more large-scale events. As Mr. Taylor pointed out, the current zoning calls for up to seven-day events four times a year. Our biggest event is five days. And none of the rest of them, as you'll see, the kinds of things we thought about are really more than a few days. So we want our neighbors not to be concerned or have worries about when they see people on our land. Neighbors are always invited in. Come and see, ask questions, and perhaps we can have things that we can all participate in together. Next slide, please. So this, Mr. Taylor did a great job of explaining what we're looking for. So just in a nutshell, the thing we're not looking for more event days than current regulations call for. We're just looking to break them up into smaller chunks over the course of a year. We are looking for more setup days and cleanup days, because we do want to make sure that everything is safe going in, and everything is cleaned up going out. Yeah. Next slide. And we just have a couple of graphical ways to portray what we're asking for. On this slide, the yellow portion is the amount of time that we're using the land for events right now, for campout events. And the right side is what it would turn into. So in essence, we'd be moving from using the land for these campout-type events from just under 3% of the time to just under 8% of the time. So it's still a lot of being there time. And then just what it would look like on a calendar is the next slide. The green is what we've done already, what we've gotten permits for already. And the blue are just, as we've been brainstorming ideas. We don't have anything planned yet, because we need to wait until hopefully we get approved from you. But the kinds of workshop-y things that I talked about would be in the blue, just showing potential. Ruby?
Sure, thank you. So in conclusion, thank you. We have a proven track record, going back 20-plus years of hosting events safely in the state of Arizona, and going back from 2019 onwards in Cochise County. There are short events with minimal impact on the land and the neighborhoods. Our events are bring-you-on everything. So we won't be tapping into groundwater. We won't be, everybody brings everything that they need to the event, and it's leave-notrace event. So we take everything out, but that's when we leave our trash, as well as anything that we brought to the property for the event. We also do improvements to the area. So for example, the rains and the post-rainy season. The road needs some work. We always grade the road before our big event in April. And we consider ourselves part of the community. We really do wherever we've been, and we've always done this. With the money left over after each event, we donate to local causes, nonprofits. And over the last three years, we've donated to Wilcox Fire, Wilcox Theater Arts, the Wilcox Animal Shelter, and Wilcox Against Substance Abuse. And we will continue to do so as we use this land. We also have emergency management teams in place. We're not a fly-by-night operation. Next slide, please. So on-site, we have 24/7 support. We have medical and fire that are staffed by trained professionals with certifications. We have mental health, as well as fire equipment, water trailers, and active-duty firefighters who are the fire leads for the event and decide whether or not it's safe to burn, abiding by all the county regulations. In fact, we push that bar a little higher than the safety margins that the county specified to us. We also have FEMA-trained leadership teams. I have a rebuttal slide that I could show you if you need, showing all the certifications and trainings that we've got. We do have a group of volunteers. We call them Rangers, who are trained in de-escalation, mediation, and conflict resolution. We usually don't need any of that stuff, but any time you, is that amount of time? Two minutes?
You have it.
Yep. And then we have the helicopter pad, should we ever need it. And thankfully, we haven't yet.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
All right. We may have more questions than you can cover.
Would you like us to stand here?
We'll call you back.
Okay.
Thank you. This is the time for the public hearing. Comments from other persons? Three minutes each. I have some request forms. Ignacio Chavez? Sir, would you come forward? You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ignacio Chavez. I currently live in Covered Wagon, 6939 South Covered Wagon, right by, close to Cattle Drive. I just want to state that we haven't seen the road being fixed after the events. You know, we only have one way coming into the area, which is Cattle Drive and then Covered Wagon. There's a high volume of traffic, which impacts us a lot. One is the dust. I work. There's some older people that live in the area that don't feel comfortable. You know, with the amount of people, especially with the high risk of fires, even though they stated that they're taking all the precautions. But knowing the high winds, we know that it can take anything to start a big fire, and that's what all the neighbors are concerned. The arrangement for the community, we haven't seen anything for the area, in our area, that is benefiting us in any way. I think the majority of the neighbors, we oppose this, and it would be greatly if they can understand and hear us. I mean, we don't disagree with their events. We disagree with the area that is in us, that is affecting us. You know, they can do something where it's not around other people, especially, like, one of my neighbors, he's under medical treatment. Sometimes he calls the 911. So if we have an issue where they're coming in, and the ambulance have to come over, what's going to happen? It's going to affect us, because there's only one way to go in and one way to go out. So my concern is the risk of fires, dust, heavy traffic, and the noise that is affecting us too. I submitted a letter, and I explained more in depth. And so one of the residents that we oppose these events to move forward.
Thank you.
Oh, can I say something else?
Yes.
They said, they live in Phoenix. We live here in Wilcox. We're there permanently. And we hate the dust. It's been dry. It doesn't rain much. So we're having the high traffic. It's affecting us. So if they can consider that we're the ones that live in the area, you know, so we're requesting, take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mr. Talarico?
I pronounced it right. Thank you. My name is Bruno Talarico, and I'm a resident of Cochise County. I live at 10544 East Watering Hole Street in Sierra Vista. And I'm in favor of this event. And I've been a participant. I became first aware of the event when I was with Cochise College, and I was participating in the emergency services meetings with different agencies in the county. And it came across my awareness, because it was the first time a group had requested such permits for events. And the first response at the meetings, which were fire department, most of the government agencies in the area, Border Patrol, National Park Service, police, and county sheriff. And the first response was rolling of eyes and jokes about, you know, a bunch of stoners in the desert. And as time progressed, I volunteered for Saguaro Man as the medical lead. My background is in nursing, and I continue to be the medical lead for the event. And I found, as things progressed, and I participated in the planning, that this is a very good, strong organization. They have very professional services. Our fire control is, we have two actual departments within our organization that address fire. One is about the burn campfires and the bigger art burns. The other is related to fires, spinners and art, that type of art. And I can say that I'm very impressed. And at the time I worked at Cochise College, I was the head of the emergency services and fire services. So I have some background there. So just want to say I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Noreen Moffett?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Noreen Moffett, 726 West Stewart Street, Wilcox, Arizona. To be fair, I have a dual interest. I am part of Saguaro Man, but I'm also part of this community, Wilcox community. That is more important to me. I have been here since 27 years. I raised my daughter here, and I am retired Border Patrol. So I do have vested interest. I am here in favor of Saguaro Man. What I have seen in the last year, and what I've noticed, which really has impressed me, is Wilcox does need the money for these programs, Wassa, Wilcox Against Substance Abuse, our shelter, our fire department. I know, I have seen firsthand, and also involved in, with the community, in using some of these funds to help the children and to help the adults in free programs for the city. And that is all I have. If you have any questions, most important, my loyalty goes to Wilcox and the community. Saguaro Man is my family. So I would never do anything, and I know they would never do anything to harm this area or the residents around it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Edelman? Are you online?
Joan, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Joan Edelman. I live on Covered Wagon Road. And just so we make it clear, the community has been opposed to this from the first day on. The road is not conducive to having 2,600 people going back and forth. It's not safe. The fires are not, I wouldn't say out of control, but they're very large. They build things that are 12, 15, 20 feet high, six buildings, and then they burn them. So you have smoke and cinders going all over the place. This is not conducive kind of activities, so far as supporting the community goes. The $1,500 for water to the fire department is not really the end-all and be-all. If we have a fire, they're never going to get here in time to do anything. They bring in 500 gallons of water to put out fires. That's barely sufficient if there was ever a fire breakout here. Now they want to increase the amount of times they come out. We're still digging the dirt out of the house every time they have an event. And not one of them live here. Not one of them live in this community. People for three to five miles around hear the noise, the music, amplified music, and can see the fires. I'm a mile away, and I can see the fires from my back door. It just goes on and on, that this is not conducive for this area. And we've been expressing that. This is more like a carnival, where it says clearly that there's no circus or carnivals on RU land. And they have the music, the food, the dance, the alcohol. Yeah, they don't sell alcohol, but they sure serve it around, along with food and everything else, and drugs. So this has been... So this has been, a lot of the neighbors wrote in, and a lot of the messages got lost in the shuffle, because different people were heading up this area to get permits for this event. And they have not done anything on the road in three years. They don't worry about when they leave, what condition it's in, and if we ask them for anything, they tell us, well, before our event, we'll come and do something. Well, they haven't, and they don't. Usually the neighbors take care of it all before they get here, because it's necessary so that we can drive up and down more comfortably. And it just turns out that their event comes in time after we're done taking care of it. And so then, they come in with twenty-six hundred people back and forth, buses, tractor-trailers, so they can bring in their bulldozers and clean up their land and do what they want.
Thank you, Ms. Edelman. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Do we see anyone else?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
Hearing none. This is the time for the applicant's response. You have five minutes.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And thank you, Joan. We hear the neighbors' concerns, and we fully empathize with that. We're homeowners as well. We're committed to widening and grading that road. Once we get approved for this, that's part of the approval that we just received for the permit for this year's Suaroman. And it's part of what we're expecting to need to do, and we want to do, is part of this special use permit. We'll do it at our own expense. We've got the folks lined up, and we won't incur into anyone else's land, other than ours, in order to make the roads good and clean and that. We're also committed to developing the land, so dust that happens cannot happen as we move forward in the future, developing by the natural habitat. So we have a team already looking at potential options on trees and shrubs, native shrubs, so that we can move it from the damage that's been done from cows to making it a natural habitat. I'd like to address something specific. We've never had twenty-six hundred people going to that land. Our biggest, the one event that folks are referring to, Suaroman, twelve hundred people last year, and about twelve hundred and thirty people this year. We do have safety protocols in place for the one event. So our special use permit is about multiple small, quiet campouts, where we can do things like workshops together. Zero burning of anything, and zero amplified music. So just, I want to separate a little bit the one event from the rest of what we're applying for. Anything else in our five minutes?
Yes. Please move on to the next slide. The slide after the end. Two more. There we go. I mentioned our leadership team and the certifications that we hold amongst the folks who are organizing and planning out the safety of our event. This isn't, you know, a bunch of folks hanging around a campfire, setting fire to stuff, and it is definitely done with safety first in mind. Next slide, please. That's a photograph of our fire trailer. It's serviced and maintained every year. It's a five-hundred gallon water trailer. We also have, abiding by the stipulations of the county, an ADEQ, both of whom we've worked with on the fire safety aspects and permits. The requirement is the wind needs to be less than twenty miles an hour at twenty feet. We set ourselves a limitation of fifteen miles an hour at twenty feet. We have active-duty firefighters around the fire. We have a team of what we call ember chasers, who are outside the burn perimeter with five-gallon water packs, beta sticks, and blankets, fire blankets, who follow any embers that take off and put them out as they land. And then, one last thing I wanted to mention was the burn perimeter that we have with...
Next slide.
Yes, thank you. The total amount of space taken up by any of the burnable, we have three small art objects that'll be there, maximum height of eight feet, maximum length and width of twenty by ten feet, the structures. We have two larger structures and one four-by-four structure. And it takes up less than one percent of the cleared area that we burn in. The wind tends to come in from the southwest, and so we will situate them such that any embers will have the ember chasers downwind to catch them as they come out. And then the noise concern, we have the eighty-decibel limitation on the borders. We have a sound team with audio meters, and they make sure that they are standing on the edges and control it throughout. We also have quiet hours that we stipulate. So volume is turned down at midnight, and amplified sound is shut off at two AM?
Yes.
At two AM.
And I guess I would just add to what Ruvi just said.
All of this is for one event.
Yeah, that's all just the one event that we're most known for, not the events that we're doing. And one last half a sense. We have, we don't want to burn down the neighborhood. We also don't want to burn down our people that we're there with. We have a quiet camping area set aside. So before anybody else in the area hears the noise, we deal with the people who are there, who we've promised, you're not gonna be able to go to sleep at night. So we hope that you approve us, and we're here for any of your questions as well.
Thank you.
So the public hearing portion is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. No, sir, I'm sorry, the public portion is finished. But thank you. Sorry, we heard, we heard. We're listening, and we've read everything that's been presented to us online. Mr. Chavez, we're done with the public portion. I am sorry. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Saunders?
If you have twelve hundred people going through there, do you have no dust control going on? In your application, number twenty-one, you say no, you don't need dust control. So I'm a little confused. Are you controlling the dust with water, or...?
We don't at this time. If that's a requirement, we're happy to do so. We can contract with water trucks to come and lay water down on the road and on our property if that's needed. In fact, we've been working with Mr. Taylor and the county, and every requirement that we've been asked to, every change that we've been asked to do, we've complied by. And I don't know, Mr. Taylor, do you have anything to share about that?
He can't right now.
Okay.
I have one more.
Yes.
I think you cleared it up, but you get five permits when you're learning, but you're only burning on the one event in April?
Yes.
You already have a special permit?
Yes. We have a fire subscription now with Wilcox Fire, and we've also applied for and been approved for the permit for one, for our event in April, which is the only event we'll ever do.
No other burning.
Right.
Not for a minute, lady. Thank you.
By the way, we also have chosen not to burn. There was one year where the winds were too high, wasn't worth the risk, we shut it down. We have prescribed burn hours. It'll happen between sundown and before ten PM, and that's it. We make that call, and we stop it if it just, we know how it is. We're not gonna risk it. It'll be the end of our activities if we ever cause any problems.
Any other questions, folks?
Go ahead.
Mr. Limbach?
So you have said multiple times that you're neighbors. You own homes too, but again, you're not neighbors. You don't live in this area, so you're not impacted the same way that the immediate neighbors are.
For sure.
So I do want to just quickly summarize, because there were several statements in opposition. Inadequate road infrastructure for emergency vehicles, inadequate water infrastructure, fire-based activities in a high-risk burn area, air noise, dust pollution, destruction of roads, which is a big one, that you're hearing comments on. Public nudity and drug use, which I actually didn't see the nudity part, but I did spend a couple of hours watching YouTube videos, and those are very revealing, and they kind of back up what the neighbors are saying. Destruction of very wildlife, and overall damage to the well-being of residents, livestock, and natural habitat. And I've heard your responses to this, but I would welcome you to respond further if you'd like.
I would like to address the videos that are out there, whether they're at a Suaroman event or whether they're at the Nevada Burning Man event, because people often confuse the two.
No, there is no confusion.
Okay, this was at Suaroman then?
Yeah.
Okay. We certainly abide by all Arizona regulations with regard to nudity on private property. And so there won't be any of that stuff anywhere near the road. It's not, you know, we don't police what people choose to do on the private property in that sense, as long as they're abiding by the state laws with regard to nudity. And we have a sign posted at the front about the statute, the Arizona statute on nudity on private property. It's not a prevalent thing these days. Everybody's got a camera, and many of us have day jobs and careers that would be jeopardized if such behavior became public. There was mention of drug use. It's not something we condone in any way. It's stated on our website and our event sites that there's no drug allowed. Anybody found, we haven't had it yet, but if anyone's found selling, distributing anything like that, immediate dejection, leave that. Were there other concerns that you'd like us to address?
Well, my last comment is, your largest event, you said, is about thirteen hundred people?
Well, it was a thousand, twelve hundred, and twelve-thirty this.
Well, this is from your own presentation. So is that wrong?
No, it won't grow bigger than that. The property doesn't pose...
So that's a lot, what I'm trying to get at is, that is a heck of a lot of people to be controlling and ensuring that they're in compliance with local, state, and federal laws. So if the noise is going beyond two in the morning, you know, what are you doing to stop that?
Thank you for this question. This is where our leadership team and our team of what Ruvi mentioned before, the Rangers come in, as well as our sound team. So the sound team, for example, goes around every couple hours throughout the day and throughout the night with a sound meter. And they shut down anybody who is amplifying sound. So they measure, make sure that we're in accordance with, they go to the perimeter...
Yep.
And as well, and measure the sound decibels to make sure that we're not violating any of that. The Rangers that Ruvi mentioned, the people who are trained in de-escalation, we have something like fifty of them at Suaroman, right? Again, we're talking about the big event. And they are walking around throughout the event, looking for things like that and helping to mitigate anything that might come up, so it stops. And they, as well as the event leads, have full authority to eject anybody who's causing a problem, which we have done.
Oh, thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Montgomery, anything?
Well, yes, ma'am, I do have quite a few questions, but I'll try to streamline that to the best of my ability. Can I ask you, folks, you did say you're from California?
No.
Where do, you don't live locally, though?
No, well, as close as I live locally is Phoenix. Grew up in Chicago, live in Phoenix.
California thing. It may have been recent fires that have gone on over there.
Could be.
And I've noticed, Steph, can you help out with the number of letters in opposition that you've received?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, we received six responses in favor and thirteen responses in opposition. Excuse me, let me rephrase that. Six in opposition within the notification area, thirteen in opposition outside the notification area.
And those in favor were not within that area?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Montgomery, we did not receive any responses in favor.
Oh, right. That was what I was thinking, because there are several letters in this proposition, presentation, and I have to say, they are adamant, and they are not squishy about it. They do not want this. And the main reason is fear of fire, and I have to say that I understand that. Being a member of the local fire board for twelve, fourteen years here on the border, and I do understand the issue. We've had some very traumatic fires here in the last several years. The concept to me of providing all these wonderful emergency services that you want to provide, just in order so that you can have a giant fire, or a collection of people perhaps not on their best behavior, with the Rangers you just talked about, seems to me you're setting up an event that is fraught with danger, but you want to try to keep the danger down by having all these services and personnel in place. And I just don't really get the concept. And I will say, living in this Cochise County for forty-five years, and having annual events in Wilcox, the city of Wilcox, and knowing several people who lived there forever, this kind of event is in no way conducive to the lifestyle of the area, as I see it. Maybe other places, maybe that's why I thought of California. I have so many worries about this, especially with fire. It's not something to play with in this area, okay? See if I can figure out what else I had scribbled here. I noticed you did have the Wilcox Fire Department listed on your agenda of emergency personnel or agencies.
So we do have a subscription with Wilcox Fire, and we have applied and received a permit for the recreational burns.
So it is a permit, and it is within their district, Wilcox Fire?
It is.
Okay.
It's actually, it's actually out of their district? But I did, do you think you said you got a subscription with it?
Yes.
They take subscriptions for their out-of-district coverage now.
Okay.
That's new.
I guess what I would like to have heard from any representative of Wilcox Fire is their actual opinion of this, not just can they handle it or respond to it if they need to.
I don't know if it means anything, but they did just issue a permit for the upcoming Suaroman.
Yeah. The required district does practice burning when the weather is appropriate, and when they have the time to put their forces together and not deplete those forces elsewhere. I'm just very concerned about that aspect. Also, the behavior of attendees in the twelve hundred range or a thousand people. Chairman, Deputy, did I not see you at Woodstock many years ago?
No, that would have been great.
It's something to be concerned with, and I really don't think it fits into the area of Cochise County. Maybe there are other places that this would benefit, but I'm having a problem with it personally on the danger level. The fire, I've been in these fires, I've seen embers floating down like snowflakes on fire, miles from the source, because around here you can see for miles. And here they come, landing on your house. I've been right in it.
Certainly appreciate that concern.
Just deliberately setting a large fire for entertainment doesn't seem like a good idea to me.
I would like to clarify that we do abide by the safety regulations, and we do have wind meters at twenty feet. And we do not, unless it's, I know the stipulation is twenty miles an hour, but we set our limit at fifteen, which is when we cancel anything. That's a very small part of it in. It happens on one night of the event. And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Because we're not taking any chances with that. We completely respect the concerns expressed by the neighbors. With regard to the traffic on the road, we are widening the road. The county has asked us to widen it to the south of our land, which is where our participants come in to 24 feet with the appropriate drainage to make sure that the, and grade the road before each event. So we do completely understand your concerns and the ability for an emergency vehicle and a second, you know, vehicles to safely pass side by side if needed. We are very happy to put up speed, temporary speed limit signs for all attendees, keeping them below 10 miles an hour, something like that. Whatever, whatever you think would be helpful for stuff like that.
I understand you have good intentions and are willing to invest a lot, like a helipad for a helicopter. You're going to pour concrete slab for that, or?
It's a clearing. It's been there from the time we busted it up.
What we're required to consider here is the input of the neighborhood or the surrounding residents. And of course, we get those comments every week, every month. In this case, it is, it's a heavy overload in opposition. And they cite many reasons. These are not just scribbled postcards. These are letters. And they are detailed.
We've read them.
And, and I am compelled to consider them all the time, you know? And today, I think, is one of those days. But that'll be the end of my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Ms. Vickett, do you have anything?
May I, may I just build on one thing? My, my hope. So we, the focus keeps being on that one event, on Swarowman. And nothing else that we're asking for in the special use permit. And we're specifically saying that would be the only one. We really want to be able to be there more often.
If I can respond to that response. I have been thinking all afternoon on this, that if that particular event was nowhere part of this, not mentioned, not part of your existence in any way, it would be an entirely different approach, I think. But it is. And if it were to be eliminated from your presentation on another day, let's say, if you approached the county with a different idea that did not include the Swarowman or anything like it, I think it would be a different presentation that might be friendlier. But today, this is what we have. And we'll go with that. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask a follow-up question to that. If Swarowman is eliminated from your special use, period, it's just gone, do you still want to have the other events? Or is there some kind of precursor? Does Swarowman create the precursor to the other events?
Swarowman isn't necessarily a precursor. We would, if that would be the way it would end up, we would continue to apply for the one-time event for the permit that we've been applying for every year.
The special use permit.
Yes, okay.
And Mr. Taylor, there's been six special event permits approved. At what point do neighborhood complaints stop Cochise County from issuing special event permits?
My question.
And you even answer that?
I agree with that question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, that is a very pointed question. So staff has issued permits, just to go back, a five-day camping and art event in May of '22 with conditions, including the red flag no-burning days. A decompression event in October of '22 with fewer conditions because there were no, there was no burning associated with it. A large Swarowman event in the spring of 2023. A large Swarowman event in the spring of 2024. A decompression event in the fall of 2024. And the most recent would be the special event permit approval last week following the meeting of the LEPC, the Local Emergency Committee.
I don't know what that is.
Excuse me for the moment. Anyway, they met on February the 4th. And they typically are concerned with access, safe access to and from the property and for the folks in the area, as well as the red flag warning prohibit, prohibition on burning. But that is, that has been issued as well. So I think, to the point, a lot of these conditions have expanded over the years in direct response to the concerns by the neighborhood. However, the special event permit process still remains administrative. We can impose conditions, and we have. And just one last thing. If the commission were to modify what's being requested relative to that large event, the applicants can certainly continue to apply for that special event permit.
Right. That was my assumption. Is the April 2025 event contingent on the development of the road?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, one of the conditions within that permit, covered wagon road shall be widened to 24 feet from the property south to Cattle Drive prior to the event. Dust control on covered wagon road and onsite driveways during the event, period. And we have included that as a condition within the special use as well.
Ms. Vickett, you're thinking on this?
How many miles is it from Kansas Settlement Road to where they're going to improve the road?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vickett, our Engineering and Natural Resource Department is requesting that covered wagon road be widened. And we're requiring a condition that it be dust control measures are taken during the events from the property access south to Cattle Drive, which is two miles. At that point, Cattle Drive, Quicksilver and Arsburger are all in county maintenance and can handle two-way traffic.
But it's not a really great road. I live on a, I live in a rural area. By the way, I've lived here 75 years in Cochise County. I, the first time I heard about this, I had been exposed to the Burning Man in Nevada, which is at least done out on a dry lake, away from any populated areas. And it's still pretty controversial at what happens there. When I heard that they were doing this in Cochise County, I was pretty appalled. Because, no, it doesn't fit with our culture. It's not artistic in the manner of our county. Nor do I feel that I want my young children or even my adult children exposed to, I believe, what happens there. And so, but you're out in the middle of a dust bowl where people have to come and go. If I figure this right, and you've got like 1,200 people, say you have four people per vehicle that comes in there, that's at least 300 to 400 cars coming in on that road. If you put 300 to 400 cars down the road, the dirt road that goes in front of my house, I would have three inches of dirt in my house. And it is maintained by the county. That's one of them. Another one is your FEMA certifications. When I worked for ADOT, I had to have FEMA certifications. All I had to do was watch a video. I watched so many videos. I mean, I'm sure how many of those FEMA certifications I had, but they weren't worth much. And they're holding weight to mitigate a real catastrophe. We all, everybody who worked there had to watch them. And what it said was that we had to maintain until such time as somebody else of authority came on the property or to the event that was happening and could take over. I understand there's nudity at this event. It's in your website. Whenever I was reading about that, clothing is optional. But you have children there. And I do believe that could be considered child abuse. So what do we do about that? I work in a school. And believe me, I don't go for this. This is not appropriate. This is not something our county wants to be known for. This is not us. I have friends who live in the area that you hold this. And one of them said that she makes her kids hide their eyes when this event's going on as they go by. And that's, you know, kind of sad that you would say this is okay. And as for, there's a number of problems here with the Burning Man. But what's to say that if we give you a carte blanche to do all of these other campouts, as you call them, that they're not similar in character to what this is? All we have is your word for it. And it doesn't carry a whole lot of weight for me. So I just, I have a real problem with allowing, saying, giving you just a platform to say, well, you're going to have these events without, we don't even know what they might be. Maybe they're only a few days. But if, the way I look at it, it's, there's only a few months out of the the year that you're not running cars in and out of there at least one or two weekends a month. I know, I wouldn't like it to be next door to me. I live on 80 acres. Put 1,200 people on my place with all those vehicles, it would not be a pretty sight. And my neighbors would be highly upset with me. So I guess I don't have any questions. I suppose, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders, anything?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Markowski?
I'm willing to add one quick thing.
Hold on. Mr. Young?
We'll get back to security. So they say Arizona Rangers are present during this event. Are they present at all the other events as well? Are they 24/7?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have Rangers at all your events? Just doesn't matter?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Thank you. Mr. Young, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, I wanted to second or third the motion of, or the concept of culture shock. Here's a conflict of cultures, really. And Wilcox, Arizona, has been Wilcox, Arizona for hundreds of years. And it maintains its own culture. And it's known for that culture. Rex Allen, cowboys, rodeos, nothing like this. Now, this was given to me today. And I think it is something, is it off of their website?
It's off of their website.
Okay. This is a disclaimer. And quickly, it says, "You may be infected by an illness, sustained property damage or loss. Become seriously injured. Have your feelings hurt. Become permanently disabled or even die by attending this event." So that might discourage me from going.
It is unfortunate, an insurance requirement. Just never give those. In 20-plus years, we've never had any of those things happen.
Good.
We haven't had any violence. The violence that we've had have been through massacring counseling with police. And people like that, they are immediately escorted out of the event. We have a code of conduct that people follow. This is not, I guess the big difference here is it isn't an event that people attend. They participate. They are part of the event. And they own the event. Nobody's making a profit off of this. This is not a for-profit venture that is trying to make money out of it. It is an art community that gathers. And, and yes, I completely hear what you're saying. But it's very different from what Wilcox used to. With regard to the nudity, and I understand, I go back 20-something years with this community. Back in the day, it was a lot more. It was very much a safety third. Anything goes. We've evolved over time. We've realized that those crazy days are beyond us now. We're adults, and we have real consequences for our people. And so we've changed and evolved accordingly. I mean, file all the necessary permits we have. Fight fight all the state, federal and county regulations when we do this.
I, I've just been thinking about the nudity. And I don't think I've ever seen anyone nude at a Swarowman. But it's not disallowed.
Because now everyone's walking around with a camera these days. And then they'll put it up on the web. And the next thing, your boss, you're coming to work the next day, and there's a picture of you.
That sometimes happens with the commission here on presentations we get. Sometimes they're a very good idea. They're well-planned out. They're constructed professionals have been hired to structure the events or, or the, the concept. But they don't fit here. They would be better somewhere else. And those are safety reasons and many other reasons. We just had one last month. I have to, I am compelled to think that such an event is, that this would be better off somewhere else, not in Wilcox, Arizona. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we are finished. Thank you, folks, for your patience. Mr. Taylor, your summary and recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of Docet SU-2426 to allow recreational camping events with the following conditions. Covered wagon road shall be widened to 24 feet from the property south to Cattle Drive. Control dust on covered wagon road and onsite driveways during events. A floodplain use permit is required. Number three, noise levels at the parcel boundaries are limited seven days per week to 80 decibels from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., 50 decibels from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. and 55 decibels from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Number four, open burning shall comply with state and/or local jurisdiction permitting requirements. A copy of the permit shall be provided to the county prior to the event. Fire shall be constantly attended until extinguished and burned, unburned material shall be placed in a non-combustible container until removed from the site. Number five, open burns are prohibited during wet red flag warnings. Number six, clean, dry wood shall be used for burns. Construction materials, rubbers, plastics and other forms of trash or refuse shall not be burned on site. Refugees shall be stored in closed containers to avoid creating nuisances for nearby property owners or attracting wildlife. Commission number seven, a minimum of two access points providing both ingress and egress are required during events. Number eight, the number of portable toilets and hand washing stations shall meet county requirements. Number nine, utilize City of Wilcox or other vendor fire suppression subscription services during events with open burning. Number 10, an emergency evacuation plan must be submitted to the county and updated annually. The standard conditions relating to permitting timelines and modifications remain in effect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to call for this motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve Docet SU-24-26 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factor is in favor of approval constituting the finding of fact.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Markowski. Is there any final discussion before we vote? Please make clear the reason for your vote. Mr. Saunders, would you go first?
I'm going to vote no, because I'm concerned about the dust situation and the fact that I'm 21 and stated no dust problems.
Mr. Markowski?
I'm voting no, too. Same problem. The dust is a big problem.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Vickett?
I'm voting no. I don't think it's appropriate for our communities of Cochise County. And also, I, there's problems with the fire and dust.
Mr. Young?
I'm going to vote no, due to the dust issues that it causes the neighbors.
Mr. Montgomery?
I'm going to vote no on this project. As it not, in my opinion, appropriate at all for Cochise County. Somewhere else, maybe, I don't know where, but not here.
Mr. Limbach?
I know. First is large public opposition. Number two, Uh, no, uh, first is large public opposition, number two, inherent dangers associated with traffic congestion and fire, and three, the air and noise pollution.
Thank you, and the chair also votes no and I really can't add any additional reasons, I concur with them all. We're sorry, this motion fails. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday or online at cochise dot az dot gov. And I thank you all for your patience. Planning Directors' report, please.
Sure. On January the twenty-eighth, the Board of Supervisors considered three rezonings. Uh, that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January eighth. Two were approved, one was denied. That was Mr. Thede. On the twenty-ninth, we had a work session about the comprehensive plan updates, more on that in a minute. On the twenty-fifth of this month, the board will consider the impound yard rezoning, which the special uses continue to pawn. Also, there is an appeal of the special use ALQ that the board recommended denial of last month.
Was that the Cherokee Drive?
Yes, it is.
That's J six, right?
Okay. Um, and next month, we will have a meeting on the twelfth. We have one down zoning. And then we have a combination docket, which is the comp plan amendment, rezoning and special use in order to accommodate a truck stop with RVs.
And who?
And Bowie.
Oh, my.
Um, so that's, that's it for, uh, recent and upcoming. Um, I did attach to the, uh, agenda with a comp plan update. That's essentially the update that I provided to the Board of Supervisors. Um, several of you were.
Very comprehensive, by the way. I mean, it's not just in the title, you did it.
Well, thank you and thank you for attending if you were able to and if you weren't. There is, uh, basically the presentation that I provided. Um, it was focused first and foremost just informing the board of what the plan is, what their requirements are. Um, and then going through some initial findings from the survey and the public outreach. And then also talking in detail a little more about demographics in the county and how all this informs us about how to construct our comprehensive plan. And that's all I have.
I got the impression from the supervisors that they're very economically minded. They're, they're all about the economic health of this county, which is good, it's a good focus. But our focus is land use, so I didn't feel like I got a lot of instruction. Um, we talked about having a work session for this, this group. And if y'all have any ideas about the comprehensive plan, um, could you please get them to Christine? Maybe we will.
Uh, yeah, and we've been trying to find a month where it hasn't been as heavy with dockets. It has been very, very heavy and, you know, I, I want to respect your time and not make you come even for an additional meeting. So, uh, possibly March could work, I know, Ms. Vickett, you're not available. Um, if not, then, then possibly April, we could have just a special work session with you guys. Um, and we'd probably focus more like on the land use side.
Yes, please. So tentatively April and can we include that in our regular monthly?
Yep, meeting.
One very quick comment before you're done?
Yes, sir.
Whenever.
I'm done.
I just wanted to, um, thank staff for those outstanding drone photos that we get.
Yeah.
Oh, they're wonderful.
Presentations, they really say a lot and they help us to evaluate. Good job. What kind of altitude do you get on those?
Uh, we're limited to four hundred feet, not as windy as it is anymore. Um, and also we always get warnings about land immediately, but that's a high winds. So typically two hundred, two hundred fifty is about.
Well, I really liked it.
Well, and you get.
You know that. Yeah, they're very helpful.
A car full of, of groups of pigeons.
Yeah.
We got my son one for Christmas. We're at his house. He's got it flying and you know kind of how the little birds will come and attack a big bird? Those, those were pigeons, I think. And there was a whole flock of them came after his drone. And they, it was, it was unreal. They were just flying around and around and he's like, don't hit it, don't hit it, don't hit it, he's trying to get it down.
Is there a pigeon shortage?
Well, he'd have probably liked to have taken a few of them out, not with his drone.
Also, this new sound system is, uh, awesome.
Oh, it worked well, didn't it?
Yes, yeah.
I like it.
Very good, yeah, and that, more changes and improvements to come apparently from IT.
Good, good, very good. So if anyone has no objections, are we finished?
We're finished.
This meeting is adjourned.